Take two. Good evening and welcome to the Candidate Forum for Los Gatos Union High School District Board Seats. My name is Kathy Murdfeld and I'm co-director of the high school.
Pardon me. Elementary school district.
Union School Districts. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I'm totally, I'm gonna start a third time. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Candidate Forum for Los Gatos Union School District's Board Seats. My name is Kathy Murdfeld and I'm co-director of Voter Services for the League of Women Voters for Southwest Santa Clara County, which includes four communities: Los Gatos, Saratoga, Manos Reno, and Campbell. Tonight, the League of Women Voters is pleased to sponsor the event, which gives you, the community, the opportunity to learn about our candidates. It also gives the League an opportunity to further our mission, which is to provide information to all voters so that they're informed and educated when they cast their ballots. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. It promotes informed and active participation in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The town of Los Gatos does not support any candidate or political party. We thank the town for allowing us to hold our forum in their civic center this evening. We want to thank KCAT, who will be filming and televising tonight's forum so that it's possible for a wider audience to view the forum. The forum will be aired on Channel 15. We have provided information on the table in the lobby about joining the League. We're always looking for new members. The League is also hosting a few more pros and cons sessions regarding ballot measures and propositions for this election season. We're also sponsoring two important educational programs. One is about spending on water bonds and the other is on clean energy. Please take a look at the flyers on the table in the lobby. The forum tonight is highly scripted. Our moderator will be going over the structure of the forum and introducing the three candidates who are running for two seats on the Los Gatos Union School Board. But before we do that, I'd like to introduce our support team tonight. First, it's my pleasure to introduce the president of our local league, Hannah Atani. She is an enthusiastic supporter of all that we do. Next, our hostesses this evening are Sue Clooney and Barbara Lee. They will be collecting your question, your question cards. If you need a question card, raise your hand and they will pass you one. If you filled in a question, passed it to the end of the row, it will be collected and then passed to our question sorters. Tonight, our question sorters are Wendy Henry and DeeDee Smullen. They will be reviewing your questions, making sure there are no duplicates, and choosing ones that address a general concern or issue. These questions will then be given to our moderator, and she will ask the questions and allow each candidate time to answer. Our timekeeper tonight is Daniel Henry. And now, I'm pleased to introduce our moderator for tonight, Gloria Chung-Hu. Gloria is the Director of the League of Women Voters of California. Gloria is also the Council Chair for the five Leagues of Santa Clara County and previously has served as President of the San Jose-Santa Clara League. Join me in welcoming Gloria as our moderator this evening.
Thank you very much, Kathy. It's a pleasure for me to be here. It's always fun to be a moderator in another city, and we sort of do that because I have no vested interest, I don't know the candidates, I just met them tonight. So truly, I'm in pure League style to be totally impartial, and I really appreciate the opportunity. You've heard a little bit about the League. Again, we never support any particular candidates, but we are very interested in good government and citizen engagement. So, we applaud you for being here tonight and our audience for watching because I suspect while the national elections have been, have had many questionable debates, I suspect the election that will happen in terms of selection of a trustee for the school board will have more significant impact, and it's a very important election. We want to thank our three candidates who are here tonight, who are vying for two seats on the Los Gatos Union School District for their interest in serving and doing so much good for our young people. Let me now introduce them. Kathy earlier had them draw cards to determine the order, and so we are, have with us in this order: Moni Farhadi, Stephen Dale Parsons, and Daniel Snyder. The question sorters, the questions that you submit will go to our sorting team of League members, they will review, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to the questions, although I may toss in if time permits for a few quick, what I call lightning rod, questions. We'll start with each candidate making an open statement, I think we have a maximum of two minutes, I understand? And then, at the end of the questioning session, which will, just before eight, will have closing comments, and that will also be limited to two minutes. And I will ask our audience, in the interest of time and decorum, to hold your applause. No boos, no discourteous comments like we've heard the national scene. We're here to hear what our candidates have to say and how they would represent us and do well. So now, let us begin with our first opening statement from Ms. Farhadi.
Thank you, League of Women Voters and audience members. Dear Los Gatos community, I'm Moni Farhadi. I'm currently an LGUSD Board of Trustee member because I believe public schools serve valuable purpose in providing free education for children from all walks of life. My family chose Los Gatos for the school districts with sort of the left side of our brain, we looked at the data and statistics; with the right side, we fell in love with the music and arts instruction. My kids began in kindergarten, went through the elementary schools in Fisher, one is currently senior at Los Gatos High School, sitting right there, and my older one is in a California Public University. They are successful outcomes of our schools, a true testament to balanced interests and nurturing the whole child. Aside from being a parent, my other hat is in the design occupation, so I work in an architectural office with expertise in educational institutions. I have 30 years of experience planning creative learning environments for schools, colleges, and universities, and collaborating with faculty, administration, students, and communities, looking at trends in education and lessons learned from the outside, so to speak. And the reason I volunteer is that I'm passionate about education and I want to contribute to decision-making on the inside. I was appointed to the Board last year after serving on the bond oversight committee for 10 years, and in that capacity, I helped behind the scenes to plan the campuses we have now. And for that role, I received the Citizen Architect Award. Being on the governing board, though, my professional and volunteer worlds have come together, and then that has made me feel whole, as we aspire our children to feel. Education is constantly evolving. As our schools plan ahead for the 21st century, it's a new era, it's important to be resilient and adaptable. I'm an American-born citizen, but I was raised overseas, and therefore, I feel very fortunate to be living here and experiencing the free education and access for all. And it's very important to me, so I offer you a continuum of experience, insatiable curiosity, and a voice for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Gloria. My name is Stephen Parsons, I'm a candidate for the governing board of the school district. My wife and I moved to Los Gatos 30 years ago, drawn by the schools as a place to start and raise our family. I served on this school board for 10 years, from 1990 to 2000, twice as the board president, and left after 10 years to concentrate on a career and raising family. I continue to serve in the community as a volunteer in Los Gatos Boy Scout Troop 539, with a number of years as advancement chairman. I'm currently on the board of a university-level education institute, it's associated with the Graduate Theological Union in Berkeley. And I'm, now that the family has grown, gets married through college, I'm seeking to return to the office. We had many challenges while I was on the school board for those years, we had new parcel tax funds, we had renewals of parcel tax, changing education standards, we had to find support all the time for art and music, and we had leadership changes at all levels. We had increasing student enrollment and therefore had to focus on class size, and we needed to work with the teachers' union to adjust the salary schedule because young teachers were not well-served in those days. And we began the process of expansion that has resulted in the beautiful school sites that we have today. And we did it all to provide the best education that our district and our community could provide. So as a candidate, again, I offer my previous long experience with many aspects of board governance, my perspective as a long-term resident and parent in the community, with my priorities to maintain the high school, the high quality of education, to maintain fiscal responsibility, and to respond to parent-community input. And so, in having the endorsement of former board member Tom O'Donnell, who served many years, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder.
Hi, my name's Dan Snyder. I have two children, Allison, who is in 7th grade at Fisher, and Elizabeth, who is in 5th grade at Dave's Avenue. I'm the product of and deeply believe in great public schools. They're the foundation of a strong community, they also reflect its core values and the investments of its members. It's why we chose to live here in Los Gatos over 16 years ago. My professional background is in corporate strategy and finance, and more recently, investing in small companies. But many people who know me, they know me because of my deep dedication and involvement in our schools. I began supporting our schools even before my oldest daughter started kindergarten. I was the treasurer of the Los Gatos Education Foundation because my friends told me that was where I could have a big impact on our kids. Then, I spent two years as president of LGF, we raised over a million dollars each year, funding science teachers, art teachers, music teachers, technology, including MacBooks for every 5th and 6th grader, and other student support programs, and made sure that kids were ready for middle school, in addition to numerous other initiatives. I volunteered in classrooms from kindergarten to, you know, this current year, I spent an hour this morning over at Dave's Avenue. I've spent seven years with some of the same teachers, I'm on the site councils of both Dave's Avenue and Fisher, I'm on the music boosters at Fisher, I'm part of the Safe Routes to Schools Committee, I have spent eight years on the Financial Advisory Committee, helping the district review audits, budgets, and solving financial problems. I've volunteered in every parcel tax and bond measure, I'm on the town's Transportation and Parking Commission, I'm also the treasurer of the Los Gatos Rotary Club. The quality of my knowledge and the depth of my devotion to this community, I believe, is reflected in the fact that I was chosen by the district's principals as the LGUSD Volunteer of the Year. I've been endorsed by the teachers, I've been endorsed by the union, by past principals, trustees, but basically, I would say, talk to the teachers who know me, talk to the principals, they'll tell you all about me. I know how the schools work from top to bottom, I believe in good budgeting practices and eliminating barriers to communication to make our schools great. Thank you. Vote for me.
Thank you. We'll start with the very first question, and so we don't always respond in the same order, I'll just toss up the numbers, and I've got a little grid here that hopefully you all have different turns, being first, last, and second. The first question is, what do you consider to be the number-one challenge facing the school district, and how would, and what would you do to address the problem? And we'll start with you, Mr. Parsons, followed by Mr. Snyder, and then Ms. Farhadi.
The number-one challenge is to, to do the job that we are asked by the community to do, which is to provide the education the best we can for the children of our community. It's what the board does. The continuing challenge is community input, dealing with the lives of the students and parents, and the realities of the teachers. And so, our, we, you know, it's all one big challenge, and to do that with fiscal responsibility is our, is our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Same question.
You know, the responsibility of the board is to basically set the direction of the school board, or the school district, and to work with superintendent to make that vision happen. It's basically to be strategic, it is not to micromanage. And I think the real challenge there for our community is, it's, as Steve said, it's to elicit the feedback from the community as to what we want. We are one of the poorest-funded districts in the county, which means, you know, we're one of the poorest-funded in the state, and we're way below the national average. We get great support from our community in the forms of donations, we have a parcel tax, but even with all of that, with millions donated, we're still among the lowest-funded. We need to improve our communication with a vision of what our schools could be and should be for our kids, for our community, and get the buy-in of our community to support those needs. That's my belief, the biggest issue is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farhadi.
Thank you. One of the silver linings of running this campaign has been that I found out about, it's been about six years since we had a local election. Other people had been running unopposed. So, as a result of my friends here, running against me, it kind of forced us to be out in the community and talk to people. And I found out that most people don't know what boards are, what boards do, that we are volunteer, that we already have jobs, and this is what we do on top of it, that we really believe in the we really believe in the schools, and that's why we choose to give of our time. And so, meeting people, I've realized that communication is one of the most important things that we have to do, because if we can communicate all the different things that our district does, we can gather more support, we can have more transparency, and we can have the confidence of the community.
Thank you. The second question is, and we'll go in this order, Ms. Farhadi, Mr. Parsons, and then Mr. Snyder. And it's a long question with some background and some comments made by this questioner. California is facing a teacher shortage and a crisis, especially in the areas of math and science. Nationally, one in three teachers leave the profession in the first seven years. In the Los Gatos community, there is a strong interest in our students being strong in math and science, and if elected, what will you do to ensure that we attract and retain teachers to grow STEM initiatives as indicated in the district goals? Ms. Farhadi.
The teachers are our biggest asset. The teachers are what makes our school district great. The teachers are the ones that I thank for the children that I have today, the successful outcomes. So it's very important that we treat our teachers with respect and the benefits that they deserve. So we are currently in negotiations with the teachers, and I'm not able to disclose a whole lot, other than because I'm a current board member, but we definitely want to make the teachers happy. We only have about maybe three to four percent that leave in our district. We always have teachers that want to come teach here. So with looking at how other districts' salaries are organized, we can make sure that they are equitably paid, have benefits such as professional development. We let our teachers bring their kids to our schools, even if they don't live in our districts, and we are family with them. We extend a hand of friendship to our teachers, and we'd like to continue encouraging our teachers to do their best.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons.
You know, the school district's one direct employee is the superintendent. Everybody else is hired by the superintendent and by the staff, so we provide direction to the superintendent. And so what the board can do is ensure that math and science are at the top priorities of what the district is looking to do and to improve and to measure, and always incrementally trying to improve. And keeping up with the state standards is no easy task, even for the teachers. And so we need to provide training, such as is necessary, to keep them up with the standards, so they don't fall behind either. And so, that's what we can do.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder.
It's a good question, because it raises a lot of core issues. The teacher turnover, which is a critical issue, especially among our younger teachers. Now, some are leaving because they're pursuing other interests. I believe, you know, over the past six years, it averages about five to six percent. It's a big issue, because those are the people who are both know the science and technology often the best. They're younger. They've just come from, you know, using this technology in their day-to-day lives. And so I think it's one of the challenges for the administration, and as Steve says, you set the direction, you don't micromanage. But to understand why that turnover exists, and are there things we can do, particularly in working with the teachers and the union, to improve the situation that makes our district and our school, our classrooms, more supportive and inviting? Because we're limited on our funding, under $10,000, we can't just go out and, you know, find millions of dollars to pay teachers more to make Los Gatos affordable. The challenge there is to say, what are those initiatives on STEM, science, engineering, and really build our community's support to bring that additional funding, to offer and educate our kids better?
Thank you. We turn from that question of teachers to the question of special education, and we'll go in this order, Mr. Snyder, Ms. Farhadi, and then Mr. Parsons. And the question is, what would you, as a board member, do to ensure special education students are served well?
I think the real challenge is, at the high level, to make sure that we are working to support our kids in the best way possible. And it's a challenge, because often, it's very complex, and I don't pretend to know, you know, special ed or a lot of the challenges, but our parents are fighting for the best, what they believe is in the best interest of their kids. You know, there's the, do we mainstream or do we not? You have to look at not just what's best for that child, but best for all children. And I think you have to give that direction to the district to set real goals and to make sure that, the measure, are those kids thriving, no matter what their abilities are? You know, every child needs to be, you know, educated to the best of their ability. And special ed kids or kids that just learning difficulties all deserve to be taught to the best of their potential.
Thank you, Ms. Farhadi.
We have about 300 of our 3,300 students that are considered, if you would, on the spectrum of special education, and there's sort of a national increase in this category. It's very important to treat each of the students individually, because everyone is a different case. Everyone needs a different amount of attention, and there is no one-size-fits-all or one answer for all of our students. So helping the teachers to be able to customize to the students, and also working with families to develop the individual plans, giving training to our teachers, perhaps having aides in the class, there's a lot of different things that we can do. But we have to be very respectful of the social-emotional learning that our students face, so that, as Dan said, they feel welcome, they feel loved in our schools, and they feel welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
It's our privilege and responsibility to educate every student that is presented to us. Special ed students are no less worthy of education because of some difficulty they have. And so, there are many state-mandated plans, issues that must be dealt with, and the district has traditionally, you know, done very well at those. The board does have oversight over these, over some of the programs. Again, we don't micromanage, but we look in on and make sure, as board, as I was on the board earlier, we look in and make sure that these things are handled correctly. What can we do is to make sure there's no stigma associated with being in a special education situation. Sometimes mainstreaming is appropriate, sometimes it's not. And with the help of the parents and the teacher and the administration, we do the best that we're able.
Thank you. This one has to do with the understanding of the governance of the school district, and we'll start with Ms. Farhadi, Mr. Parsons, and then Mr. Snyder. And the question is, please explain the governance and the structure of the school board, role of the superintendent, role of the board members, and when they report and to whom. And I suspect also tied in with that question is the relationship between school board members and the superintendent. Ms. Farhadi.
Thank you. The school board is a voluntary elected board, and the five of us members are there to set the direction. As my colleagues have said, we don't micromanage, but we do oversee the superintendent. So the superintendent is a paid position, and we are the voluntary board, representing the voice of the community to ensure that the district is following the rules and regulations of California rules. So our job is to oversee the district, and then to be the voice back to the community, so the community knows that we are there for them to make sure that the rules are being followed. And the five of us are, work together. We may not always agree, but we respect each other. We express our differences. We have sometimes monthly or bi-weekly meetings. We don't discuss things separately because of the Brown Act, so we do have a lot of rules and regulations that we ourselves have to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, and if it's, it doesn't have to be redone, and if you have anything to add to that.
School board members are individuals, but brought by the community to sit on this board, to govern, not manage, the district. There are a number of state laws that we have to follow, including the Brown Act was mentioned. It says we can't have private meetings, so two board members can talk about things, three can't. You know, it's those sorts of things that the board has to be aware of, or many, many such things as that. When the board does reach a decision on something, it is the decision of the board, and the board is often designate someone to promulgate publicly the position, sometimes the superintendent or the board president, or maybe even one of the other members. But we do speak as one voice once we've decided on something, and that's the way that we make progress in keeping our community together.
Mrs. Snyder, anything to add to the order?
They're both absolutely right. It's basically, the superintendent is the equivalent of the president of a company, where they have functionally unfettered power to do what they believe, and your job is to give them direction and to evaluate them on doing their job, to set their goals. You know, you say, what are you going to achieve this year? The state has lots of other mandates. Sometimes because of the Brown Act and public meetings laws, you have to have a lot of these discussions in public that make them difficult, and they're short. But it's, you know, because transparency in the community bind, we would be, whoever of us is elected, are the representatives of the people, both of and for the people. So we're making sure that your schools are run well, and that your money, your taxpayer funds, are spent effectively.
I'm going to do a lightning rod question. Two seconds? And the reason is, I believe that the person who sent this question about governance really was trying to ask another question, and so we'll just see if you all agree. And the question he asked me, and I said, I think I know the answer, but let's ask the candidates. And the question is very simple. So who hires and fires the school superintendent? We'll just go down the row, starting with Mr. Snyder.
A minimum of three members of the board.
The majority of the board.
Board majority.
Okay, what agreement, isn't that great? Okay, another lightning rod question, and this is one of my own making, because it was fun. I asked it last night in Santa Clara of their school board members. Tell us, what is your, another one of these ten-second ones, we'll give them ten seconds. Thinking back to your own time in school, what was your favorite subject that you were best at, and what was your worst? And we'll start at the other end, Ms. Farhadi.
In school, my best subject was art, and therefore that's why I became in the architectural industry. My worst subject, calculus.
I sympathize. Mr. Parsons.
I was in engineering, and I found computer science. I loved computer programming, and that's what I do today. My worst class was an engineering class, lines, waves, and vibrations, about how signals pass down wires and stuff like that.
Mrs. Snyder.
I love these guys. You won't do wrong with any of us. My best was science. My favorite was history, once I got into college, and they taught it differently. And my worst was English.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Now we'll go back to the serious questions, the ones I actually have in hand. The next question, let's see now, the order will go is, we'll start with you, Mr. Parsons, and then Mr. Snyder, and then Ms. Farhadi. And the question is, what single issue are you most passionate about, and how will this passion or dedication contribute to developing an educational community focused on the whole child? Mr. Parsons.
You'll find me agenda-less. I'm interested in all aspects of things. The passion is to make sure the children have the highest quality education that we can provide in a fiscally and socially responsible way. I mean, that's our job, and that is what I'm interested in helping bring to pass for all of our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder.
My passion, you know, when I was younger, was around music, because I loved playing the trumpet. And really, what I realized it came down was, a great teacher, and I had a great calculus teacher in high school. He, you know, he sort of blew through all the stuff, the requirements, and he said, now this is the stuff you actually need to know. And I hated history until I got into college and had someone who made it about this connection of ideas, that it wasn't facts and figures and rote memorization, it was this flow of history and the input of why things connected. And I went, wow, this is amazing. I wish I had discovered this early enough that I could actually change my major. But my college, Williams College, said, you have four years here, and you're gone. If you don't complete it, you've got to move on. So I think it's really making sure that our kids are engaged, and that they're not just learning for the sake of performing on a test. That's why music is so important to inspire, because you never know when you will become inspired in learning. You need to be engaged the whole time.
Ms. Farhadi.
I'm passionate about the learning environment, and that's kind of why I do what I do every day at work, the learning environment. And therefore, my role as a board member is, as I mentioned, sort of the outside of the learning environment and the inside, having an influence on the curriculum and how the children learn. So whether they're learning humanities, sciences, music, art, all of those are important, but it's the environment of the learning, and not just the physical facilities environment of the learning, but also, as Dan was saying, their social and emotional environment as well. And getting them ready for the 21st century. It's a very different world, and the jobs that they're going to be looking for have not even been invented yet. So we have to teach them learning, the love of learning. I loved going to school myself. Sat in the front row my whole entire life of being in school, so I want our kids to also love being in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, you just know money's going to always be asked. So the question is, how would you ensure that the bond money, and I believe the district approved a bond last election round or something, five years ago?
We don't have a bond.
Oh, well, I don't know what your politics are, but it says, how would you ensure that the bond money is spent appropriately, so presumably? And the order will be Ms. Farhadi, Mr. Snyder, and then Mr. Parsons. So the question is, how would you ensure that bond money is spent appropriately?
So we've had two bond measures, and I was on the bond oversight committee for both of those, but we are currently, no longer have bond funds, so I can address it sort of how we did do it, and then how we might do it if we have another bond measure in the future. Because of our state, we only receive about $9,000 per student, and it's really, that's from the state and federal and other funds. It's really not enough to pay for the capital projects that need to occur. So having been ten years on the bond oversight committee, also being, you know, in our architectural office where we work with schools on bond measures, I kind of bring all that experience to make sure that the constructions are done properly, the contracts, but also the planning. It's much more important, the amount of time you plan ahead is much more important than what you actually physically implement, because by then it's a little too late. So planning ahead, and we're already planning, so we're having facilities master planning meetings and planning for the next ten years of the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
For both the bonds, when we had the money to actually spend, we had a bond oversight committee on the parcel tax, which is ongoing, was just renewed two years ago. We have the parcel tax oversight committee. I actually sit on the parcel tax oversight committee, and we just reviewed those funds this week. In both cases, there's a legal requirement that the funds that voters have approved, whether it's a bond or parcel tax, are spent according to the law, that you spend exactly, and these funds are audited. So, but to Mani's point, really the key is to making sure you plan appropriately so that the money you spend is actually efficiently spent. It's not just that you spent it all according to what you said, but that you spent the least amount, that you make sure you're aligning what the students need in facilities, and what you get is therefore meets that need. And I think that's really the important role of both the board and the subcommittees, and the community involvement, is to make sure that you've planned out your needs, so you don't waste money on facilities. you don't waste money on facilities that are either inefficient, don't meet the future needs, or just that you've asked for money and you didn't ask for enough because you misplayed.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
So every dollar is precious, however it comes to us, and some are under some kinds of constraints, like bond, you know, building money, some are under different constraints, like parcel tax, and general funding is, you know, it all goes into sort of one big pot, but it's not. I mean, it, we, it's, you know, by law, there are ways that things must be spent, and it is our job on the board, those of us who have been or will be, to make sure that money is not squandered. I used to read every warrant register, and that's the list of checks that comes through, is given to the board, the checks that were written this past month or this past period, and just to know where the money was going, you know. As an engineer, you know, planning is one of the things that we are taught to do, and then execution. So that's built in to me, to want to make sure that each dollar is spent the way that we've said it would be spent and that the people have asked us.
Thank you. The next question, I think someone mentioned earlier about the importance of the arts, so this is a question about that. What is your view about art and music in the schools, and how should they be funded? Mr. Snyder, I will start with you, and then Ms. Farhadi, and then Mr. Parsons.
So I, both as treasurer and then two years as president of LGEF, we funded the music teachers, at least to the extent we could. They were previously funded by a parcel tax, that parcel tax expired. It also wasn't enough to fund all the things that were promised to the voters, so you needed extra community support, donations. LGEF, Los Gatos Education Foundation, gets its money by asking parents primarily and some sponsors to donate for those programs. I believe passionately that educating the whole child is important. The research shows that it results in better outcomes for kids. It teaches them, you know, ways to think, and in part, I think it's just that if that keeps that kid passionate to go to school, because they're taking their cello or their violin or whatever, or the painting in kindergarten, that kid is engaged until they will be, you know, motivated in other projects. I do believe that that's actually a community's obligation. The state doesn't require it, but I believe that's part of what we as Los Gatos, it's core to having, educating the whole child, and that's why this town is a great town, and why I believe our schools are better than most. And the tests don't test art and music, but it makes great kids.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Ms. Farhadi.
So as a huge proponent of the arts, not only for myself, but also for children, it really enhances creativity, and creativity can go across all disciplines. I think if people feel creative, they feel confident, and so at an early age, if we provide that for our children, it allows their brain cells to kind of, neurons to get all connected and helps them become better decision makers. In my own family, I have two sons, and they both did choir, for example. There'd be three boys and 30 girls in choir, but they still went to choir because it was so exciting to be singing and the social aspect of it. My older son actually is pursuing musical theater in college, and that's partly because of the Los Gatos experience, that he was very nurtured by the drama programs and the Los Gatos Youth Theater and the teachers in elementary school who supported him. In kindergarten, he saw a musical show, and he stood up, and he said, "That's what I want to do." So it started very young, and that's because of the schools that we have. So I'm very, we're very fortunate in Los Gatos.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
One of the things that brought us, as I said, to this area, to this district, was the fine education, and we found that music and art and the arts were an important component of that. My two daughters sang in the choirs. My son eventually ended up playing in band. We all took, all of us, took private piano lessons for many, many years. So music is important to us, and we understand that it's a life-enriching component of a well-rounded life. And how do we fund it? You know, again, we're not well-funded in the arts and music, and we would ask the community to be gracious and donate where and when you can, your time and your money. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question has to do with one's tummy. Quote, "I am a parent with a child at Lexington Elementary. Do you have any insights and ideas on how to improve the quality of food served to the children and staff, and what can we do to support a healthier hot lunch program?" Mr. Snyder, Mr. Parsons, and then Ms. Farhadi.
In some sense, this gets into micromanaging, but I do believe you have to offer healthy and nutritious meals to our kids, and in part, that obligation stems from, you know, we think of this as a very wealthy community, but there is a significant portion of our town that are among the free, you know, as the federal government classifies them under free and reduced lunch-eligible. And you've got to make sure that those kids are fed. Sometimes they need breakfast. We actually, I know at Dave's Avenue, we had, last year, six homeless families. It is important to provide that, and that, you know, that's part of just making sure that we survey that the parents believe these options are good, and that, you know, I personally would get rid of chocolate milk, because I see no point in having it. Kids adapt, and they learn to drink what they've got, and they'll, my kids never have had chocolate milk in their life. So I do believe it is an obligation, but, you know, that's where you have to make sure the superintendent's doing a good job.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons.
Quality of food is an ongoing issue, I think, in any institution, and it's partly because, in the case as it was when I was on the board, we were closing our local cafeterias and outsourcing our food production. It was just, it was as much a cost issue as anything, but we still tried to make sure that the lunches were served were edible, though the worst lunch of all is one that's not eaten. So it has to be food that can be consumed by the children, something they will like, and yet doesn't, you know, horrify the parents or any adult looking on. So it's always, it's an ongoing issue, but again, you know, the board doesn't pick the menus, but the board can say, "We want to make sure that the staff is cognizant of the issues," and so they'll be quizzed from time to time, that's how that goes.
Ms. Farhadi.
Yes, we do have contracts for food service that would, could be reviewed if there is community interest in the fact, or we receive enough input that it needs to be looked at. Right now, the district is going through a health and wellness sort of campaign. It's very important and top in our mind for staff as well as students. Across the country, there are more students with, people with allergies, people that gluten-free, nut allergies, various things. So it's very important to be cognizant of the national scale of food issues. And so we are trying to make sure, you know, we have less sugar, there's no soda served, various things. But we every so often do look at the food service component and perhaps do a survey or something and see if it is time to renew. But I think there are options, and we do need to pay attention to food as it relates to the health and wellness of our students and staff.
Okay, we've got one last question, but I think I have time to sneak in a quick lightning rod question, just for fun. And we'll just go down the line, we'll start with Ms. Farhadi and then Mr. Parsons and Snyder. What is your favorite food? Speaking about food.
Speaking about food. So as I mentioned, I was born in the United States, but I was raised in Iran. So my favorite food is Persian food, which has a lot of rice and stews and meats, and we combine ingredients that work well together, they're hot and cold, and the spices all kind of come together to create a healthy, well-rounded. We don't think vegetables separate from the meat, everything is together to enhance the flavors.
Going to make us all hungry, I'm Mr. Parsons.
My wife is of Greek background, and so pretty much anything Greek I like, I do especially like lamb, and when it's put together with the peas and the potatoes and other things, it's all, it's all very good.
Mrs. Snyder.
So I grew up in Chicago, on the shores of Lake Michigan, my dad would take me out fishing, 6:00 AM, or on the water, every weekend when it was warm enough and the lake wasn't frozen over. So to me, salmon is like my sort of core meal. We'd go to the farmer's market every weekend and get fresh salmon, so that's my favorite.
Well, good, a little insight into your appetite, great. Last question before we go into closing comments, and I will do it in this order, Mr. Parsons, Ms. Farhadi, and then Mr. Snyder. What specific strategies do you think need to be taken in order to increase transparency and communication between the school district, the board, and the community? What specific strategies do you think need to be taken to increase transparency and communication?
It's always an issue, and from my earlier time on the board, it was hard to get community input, and we can be as transparent as we can possibly be, we have, there are legal requirements, we do, you know, the discussions are done in open session, except for, you know, some personnel matters and things that by law can't be said. So the board does pretty much what it does in front of the people. We can't get people to come to the meetings a lot of times, and so the board has avenues of communication, there are mailings, there's the webpage, there, you know, a few, there's some targeted things. And the board is actually considering at this time, in public sessions, how to increase the community's knowledge of what the board does, what we would hope the community would do, how to contact the members of the board and the superintendent. So these are ongoing strategies that are being planned right now.
Thank you, Ms. Farhadi.
It's really important for us to communicate. As I mentioned, that was the silver lining of kind of us running a campaign, was that folks didn't know who we were and what we were doing. So I went out of my way to try to meet people at farmer's market, went to the terraces to talk to folks, I went to the Los Gatos High School football game, started talking to parents, like, "Oh, you're a board member." So I think that getting our visibility out there, because there can be passive communication, which is having, making people come to us, but then there's active communication where we send out to folks. And as Steve mentioned just yesterday, we had a board retreat, and some of the things we're talking about, which we can't quite say yet, but we are talking definitely about communications outboard to the community on a regular basis, because by the time the minutes are written and distributed and approved, it's sort of three weeks after the meeting. So is there something we can do, bullet points that could come out the next day to say, "These are the topics that were discussed," as well as coffees with the board, just like there's coffee with a cop, or other things that I've seen the town doing? Is there something that the board could do in that arena?
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder.
I actually think communication is probably the most crucial issue. I think, as Steve said, you can have board meetings, you can be transparent, but if people don't know what issue is on the board meeting, they don't come. They only come when they think it's a relevant issue, and part of this is often our board meetings are about a lot of minutia that the community doesn't care about. And, you know, I believe that the district actually needs to invest in a communications role, whether it's part-time or not, and it seems counterintuitive, you say, "Oh, well, that takes away from teaching the kids," but the reality is, we need, we rely desperately on the engagement of our community, and if they don't know what issues are being debated or discussed, or the goals or the strategy, they're not a part of that. So you have to not just say, "Oh, we're here waiting for you to show up." You have to tell the people what's on the issue, and that means not just putting it in the newsletter for the home and school club, or PTA equivalent, because 20% of parents read that. You have to use all the modern forms of technology to reach out to people and do it in a short, engaging manner, so that people know what's relevant to them and their child.
Thank you. We have concluded, all the questions have been submitted, and it is now time, and we've also run out, running out of time, so we are ready to have closing statements, and I think it's a maximum of two minutes, closing statements, and we will do it in the reverse order. Gee, Mr. Parsons, you're always getting right there in the middle. So we'll start with Mr. Snyder, Mr. Parsons, and close with Ms. Farhadi.
So first, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum, for actually helping with our communication. I believe having an election is a good process, even though it actually costs the district a fair amount of money, because it's a way for all of us to have gotten in front of every home and school club. We had lots of forums, we have people like this who are here that wouldn't have come to those home and school club meetings, because it's not where you would go to. Communication is important, but part of it is, I really believe our district needs to focus on what's best for the child. Everything we do is often about money, it's about this, and yet the metric should always be, what is the best for our children? What should that child look like and know and behave as they walk across the graduation stage at Fisher Middle School? Are they prepared? What do they need to be good at? Is it foreign language that they're not getting, or because it's an option? Is it mandatory music? What is it? We need to engage the community with that metric, and that brings in, you know, what are then, what's best for the child, leads you to what, you know, the best kind of teachers, what are those skills? And everything sort of, in my mind, flows down from the child. It allows you to evaluate spending on one program or another. There's been a lot of debate in the community about building a new school to decrowd our schools, but no one ever talks about that you then have to spend a million dollars just on overhead to run a school. Well, that's 10 less teachers teaching kids. Do they want much bigger classrooms to have smaller schools? Maybe they do, but we need to have that as a debated issue to get that community input about what's in the best interest of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
So the members of the board are elected by the people to be their representatives in running the schools. It's no longer the, you know, the people get together and, you know, hire the school marm and, you know, put up a barn for the school. It's, you know, much more complicated than that. But the boards remain volunteers, we're unpaid, and we do it because we love our children, and we want the best for them, you know, whether it's the kid down the street, I don't want him to be a dummy either, or my own children. And so we work together with the community, trying to determine what the community wants, how should we do it best? The community can't micromanage either, so the community asks us as potential or sitting board members to do these things. But we must, again, you know, watch every nickel. I'm not a financial guy, but I can add, and, you know, at the end of the day, you can only do what you can afford, because we don't have deficit spending, we don't, we can't borrow, you know, there are real restrictions on any borrowing, even money we know is coming to us, there are ways to borrow a little bit on that. So we have to be fiscally responsible and just do the best we can, hire the best teachers, hire the best superintendent, which I think we have, and to carry on the business of the people and educating the children.
Thank you, Ms. Farhadi.
Thank you. It has been a privilege being on the board this past year. Not only have I learned a lot, but it has been a lot of fun, getting new friends and kind of seeing the other side of being on the board. After presenting to boards for my work, it's interesting to now be sitting on the board. But even though my children are not in the district, our lives are intertwined. In the morning, when I wake up and I see the kids walking to school, I feel responsible for 3,000 children in our community, I really do. And so, because of our neighborhoods and relationships. So I want to be able to leverage that and do a lot more with engagement in the next four years, if I'm elected, and be a voice for the community in a different way. So I only was on the board for one year, it's not like I had a full term, so I'm really thirsty for more, and I really want, there's projects and decisions and votes we made, and I want to see how do they turn out. So with my 30 years of experience in architecture, 10 years on the bond oversight, and the training that I received last year as a board, facilitating community workshops, sort of bringing a global knowledge and reading articles all the time, and talking about learning environments and STEM, it's really, it would be a huge honor to continue to do that and bring that to the board. the board. We have set some targets for next year, we've set board goals, we've evaluated the superintendent, we've done a self-evaluation. We are really intelligent people, and it's a, it's a great group to work with. And people keep flocking to our district, because we have good S-BAC scores, we have social-emotional learning, we're family-oriented. So we need to now address the increased enrollment, and there are other ways to do it besides just building. So even though I come from an architecture background, it's not like I'm saying, "Let's go build buildings." We can make the best use of the facilities we have, we can remodel, we can expand, we can be more flexible. So the planning is going to be very important for the next year. And I pride myself in being a planner, and I would be honored if you vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give our three, this concludes the forum, and let's give our candidates some warm applause. We have another forum coming up. I did want to note that I think we've got three wonderful candidates. I think the community of Los Gatos is lucky to have them. I hope tonight's event has given you some insights into them, and I think it's a good introduction to their backgrounds, which is quite extensive, and their interest and passion for the job. So again, thank you. And you may want to also keep in mind that the league has a website called votersedge.org, has additional information. I believe in all of the candidates. I hope you've submitted your information, and that's another way for you to get information. It's also a good place for you to find out about the 17 state propositions that you'll be voting on November 8th. So be sure to check it out, unless you, or you can go through the 200-page booklet from the Secretary of State, votersedge.org. Thank you. Good evening.
So we're going to begin. We're continuing tonight with the Los Gatos Saratoga Union High School District Candidate Forum. My name is Kathy Myrdfeld. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. It promotes informed and active participation in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. KCAT is filming tonight's forum and it will air on Channel 15. This is the last of our candidate forums. We do, however, have a few more pros and cons sessions. And in the lobby, you'll find information about the three remaining pros and cons sessions, which basically the league goes over all of the proposition and ballot measures and tells you all about them and who's endorsing them and who's opposed to them. They're very informative sessions that last about 90 minutes and it's very worthwhile. We also have two more educational programs that we're hosting. And one is about clean energy and then the other is about the water bond funding. So you'll find that information on this flyer out in the lobby. So tonight's forum is highly scripted. We have four candidates running for two seats on the Los Gatos Saratoga Union High School Board. I'll introduce our moderator tonight, Gloria Chung Hu, and she will give you more of the details of the forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. It's a pleasure to be back and to work with you on this next forum. Rules are pretty much the same. If you have questions, please submit them to one of our league members who is collecting it. There we go. And our team here will be vetting the questions to make sure that they're reasonable and fair and we eliminate duplications. And then they give it to me. And then I get to ask of our fine candidates. They've been told they will each have an opening statement of one to three minutes, so maximum of three. One doesn't always have to take all three minutes, but one to three minutes. And then they will answer questions. I will mix it up a little bit so that you don't always follow the same person. And at the end of it, there will be closing remarks of, I believe, is also one to two minutes. Once again, you can take as much or as little of that as possible, but the two, that will be the maximum. And there are four candidates running for the Los Gatos Saratoga Joint Union High School District. There are two seats that are available. So these are the four candidates who are running. And they have, we have them in order in which they will make their opening statements based upon the drawing of numbers. And left to right are Mr. Ron Jones, Mr. Kyle Park, Rosemary Rossi, and Katharine Tseng. So let us now begin with their opening comments. Mr. Jones?
Good evening. My name is Ron Jones and my family has lived in Saratoga for over 10 years. I'm the father of two teenage daughters, age 18 and 13, that have grown up in the Saratoga School District, and my wife and I couldn't be happier about that. I've been an active school volunteer for our entire time in Saratoga. Most recently, I was named the 2016 Parent Volunteer of the Year for Saratoga High School. I served on the LGS Bell Schedule Committee that was responsible for the delayed school start as well as the synchronized schedules being used both by Saratoga High and Los Gatos High. I've served 13 years on school site councils, including four years on Saratoga High, two years on Redwood Middle School, and five years at Foothill Elementary. Also, I've served on both Measure A and Measure B partial type, partial tax oversight committees. I served a number of years on SUSD, which is the middle school district or elementary and middle school district, Advisory Board, Superintendent's Advisory Board, and Budget Advisory Committee, most notably during the dark period, as I've called it, where we had a drop in funding and we had to look at some really tough decisions on staffing, on programs, and things like that. So I've been through a trough that was difficult, but we did make it through with minimal impact. On the lighter note, I've been a band dad for seven years, which is something I enjoy immensely. Both my daughters are playing in band. So to me, the next natural step beyond this volunteerism is to serve on the LGS High School Board. I feel this is the right time. My younger daughter is a freshman at Saratoga High. So if I'm elected, my child, I'll have a child in high school during the entire time that I'm on the board. I'm a businessman and I understand trade-offs that must be made. I understand today's expenses versus planning for the future, and so I'm very financially and fiscally responsible. I consider myself to be a good listener and value inputs from all our stakeholders. I strike an effective balance between consensus building and timely decision-making. I'm a pragmatist that gets things done, and I'm very proud to have recently been endorsed by the Los Gatos Saratoga District Teachers Association. I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
Hi. I'd like to tell you a little bit about my background, my motivation, and my qualifications. I was born in San Luis Obispo and my teachers were, or my parents were both teachers. My father was a high school teacher and my mother was an elementary school teacher. And after I graduated from Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo, I moved up here to get a job, of course, in the Silicon Valley. And I spent my first year living in Milpitas, but a lot of my friends lived here in Los Gatos. And so I spent a lot of time here. And a year later from that, which was 25 years ago, I moved here. And the reason I moved here is probably the reason why everyone else is living around here. It's just a beautiful place, not just Los Gatos, but Saratoga and the mountains, everywhere. So that's why I'm here, because this is an amazing place. It's got amazing schools. It's got amazing recreation facilities. It's got amazing trails and everything like that. So my motivation, a bit about my motivation and running for the seat. I have two daughters. They're actually in the crowd here, too. Zoe is 12 and she's at Fisher Middle School. And Jordan is eight and she goes to Van Meter. And they're going to be going into high school in the next couple of years. And that's my motivation, not only for them, but for all of the students in this school district. So I want the best for them, and I know we have a great school district, but I think we could even have a better one. Lastly, I'd like to tell you a little bit about my qualifications. I believe it's important to give back to the community, and I started that many years ago. I ran and was appointed 20 years ago to, when I was in my twenties, actually, to the Los Gatos Saratoga Recreation Board. And I don't know if any of you know about the Los Gatos Recreation Board, but, or the Recreation Department. I'm sure you've probably heard of it, but it's really a $9 million year budget nonprofit agency doing education and recreation services for Los Gatos, Saratoga, and the surrounding communities. And their offices are right across the street here. I also have been a volunteer for Los Gatos United as a soccer coach for, with my kids. I've also volunteered when my kids were a bit younger at the Los Gatos Saratoga Observation Nursery School, which is the mountain school. And I was treasurer there for several years. From a career standpoint, I'm a technology business executive with an MBA in finance. I've been a chief financial officer of several Silicon Valley technology companies. And most recently, I co-founded my own investment bank called Harvest Management Partners about six years ago. And with that, I put together deals that sometimes you read in the paper. I hope that gives you a brief summary about me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi.
Thank you all for coming and thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I'm Rosemary Rossi. I've continuously worked to provide the outstanding educational experience our parents demand and our students deserve. During my tenure, my 12-year tenure as trustee, we have never stopped improving or adapting our curriculum to meet the needs of all of our students. We have implemented differentiated pathways so that all students' learning styles are met. For example, we brought New Tech High School into Los Gatos and we are expanding on the media arts program at Saratoga. Realizing the stress that students encounter on a daily basis, there is a continued focus on social, emotional learning, balance, and well-being. We have enhanced student support services to include proactive stress management as well as reactive intervention and support. One doesn't need to have a student in the high school to realize that technology is a vital instructional tool. And to that end, we are increasing our efforts to provide the latest in technology innovation and to provide the necessary training to our staff so that they can use this in the most effective way to serve our students. These are just a few of the exciting things that are happening on our school, and I'm proud to have been part of the board that brought these programs in. I bring fairness, commitment to excellence, and sound judgment to this position, as evidenced by my record. I've had, prior to my board experience, I was an active parent at Saratoga High School. I was a co-president of the PTSO and served on the school site and WAS committees as well as numerous other committees and positions at the high school. And as a board member, I've been active on the board in different advisory positions. So I hope you consider me when you go to vote.
Thank you, Ms. Tseng.
Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this event and thank you for coming out tonight. I'm Katharine Tseng. Thank you for your trust in me four years ago and electing me as the board member of this wonderful school district. I have worked tirelessly as your representative to ensure academic excellence, social, emotional well-being of our students, fiscal responsibilities, community engagement, and transparency in the administration of district policies and operation. In addition, I have served on both campaign committee for the passage of facility bond measure and parcel tax renewal to ensure the needed renovations and addition of the school facility and stable local funding for our district. I'm now running for reelection. With all my experience, qualification, and knowledge, I have gained over the years serving as the board member and school volunteers and organization leaders. I would like to serve four more years to make our district even better. I'm an actuarial consultant with extensive knowledge and experience in financial analysis and risk management. A strong believer in community engagement, I have taken the leadership role in many schools and community organizations, such as the president of Argina Elementary School, Redwood Middle School, co-president of Saratoga Education Foundation, Saratoga Music Booster, Saratoga High School PTSO, and Saratoga High School Foundation, as well as the vice president of Saratoga Sports Boosters. Because I really believe in being active in the community, in addition to the activity I volunteer for our school, I'm also a Rotary Board, I'm also a member of the Saratoga Rotary Club and currently serving on the Rotary Board. I firmly believe that education is the best investment for our society, and it is a joint effort of our schools, families, and community. And I'm very fortunate and thankful for the quality education that my two children receive going through our public school system. And I see serving on the high school board as an opportunity to give back to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We've now had a nice introduction. Thanks to all of you for providing that. We'll start with the first round of questions and we will do it in this order. Ms. Rossi, Ms. Tseng, Mr. Jones, and then Mr. Park. And this is a question on the finances for the school. Given the California budget constraints, how are you going to ensure that our budget can meet the needs of our students and our community? I presume that's referring to the budget for the district. Ms. Rossi?
We're fortunate to be a basic aid school district, so we are not as dependent on state money as other districts in the area, perhaps. We get our funding from, most of our funding from the property, from our property taxes. We have sound, a, an excellent chief budget officer who advises us on our, how we can spend our money, and we are very fiscally conservative. We don't spend our money unless it's, we've evaluated if we're going to get the bang for the buck. And I just, over the past 12 years, I guess that we've managed our finances excellently because we have not faced any, I have to stop, and I'm going to.
When you see the stop sign, please feel free to continue to finish your sentence. Thank you. Ms. Tseng?
Well, I shared a similar viewpoint with my friends Rosemary here, and we serve on the board together. And I'd like to add a few things. We really need to have the comprehensive and timely budget development process. And the second thing, I think the budget support must support the strategic initiative the district has adopted so we can align our budget with our goals. And the third thing, we are going to work with the California School Board Association and other school district to repeal the reserve cap, which is Sacramento, going to put it on the basic school district.
Thank you, Mr. Jones?
As Rosemary said, we're a basic aid district, which is, has been a savior in the past when cuts came from Sacramento. There never seems to be enough funds, however, for all the things we'd like to do. So that's why I think it's great that our parents get behind sports boosters, music boosters, theater boosters, speech and debate, robotics, et cetera. But that being said, you can't really depend on that either. So it's a matter of balancing today's expenditures with a rainy day fund to make sure that when change does come, that we're protected for the basic things.
Mr. Park?
Thanks, Ron. Actually, I'll echo Ron's sentiment on the booster side. I mean, I think that's something that we've done pretty well and that we continue to do for the school district. But I think I sat down with the chief business officer of the district a couple of weeks ago as part of my research before deciding to run for this position and talked to him a little bit about the budget. And the budget seems to be like we're in pretty good shape with the property taxes. So I'm not too worried about that from, from that standpoint. Obviously, things can happen, but I'm also a CFO by, by trade. And having that kind of experience, I mean, it's, it's down to audits, it's down to making sure that you do financial planning and forecasting. So I, I think that's, that's all I'll say there.
Thank you. This, I'm going to combine two questions together. It has to do with the fact that there are two high schools in the district. And I'll maybe give this a little bit more time, maybe a minute and a half to answer this, because I think maybe a little bit more complicated. And the order will go in as we'll start with Mr. Park, then Mr. Jones, Ms. Tseng, and then Ms. Rossi. Do you think having two high schools in one district is a strength or a weakness? And how do you balance family choice for either of those? And I think the concern is, by this other questioner, is that by having two, are they roughly the same? Or do you feel it is okay for two schools to be different and to be specialized in some areas, such as extracurricular activities, scheduling, and special programs? I think it's appropriate to pull them together. It really has to do with distinction with these two high schools. So if you could address that?
Sure, sure. Well, I've had some experience with that, with the Los Gatos Saratoga Rec Board. I mean, we have the same issue. You know, we're serving not only Los Gatos, Saratoga, but we're also, also the mountain communities. So I'd say that, I mean, it's always listening to the constituents, it's listening to the parents, what needs to be done. I think in some instances, I think it's, it's okay to definitely have different programs in, in different areas. I think they both need to be treated fairly. I think that, I mean, historical reference, obviously, the, you could see how this potentially happened a long time ago when there wasn't a lot of students or people living here. Obviously, having one, you know, one district made sense. I mean, I'll throw it out there, maybe at some point, there needs to be two districts. But I don't know what it would take to do that. But, I mean, I'm, I'm up for change, let me tell you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I think if you think that the two schools are the same, you're probably maybe burying your head in the sand. They're two very different schools, they're very, two different varied populations, but that's not bad. I mean, there are focuses at one school that aren't big focuses at the other and vice versa. I think over the years, the board and the communities have made sure that things were fairly treated, that, you know, the schools got the resources they need and they were equally balanced. I served on the Bell Schedule Committee, and we were bringing together two different schools, and there was exactly the same number of people representing Los Gatos as Saratoga. There were 13 on each side. And it was amazing, as we went through it, there was a lot of give and take, but at the end of the day, we came to a consensus conclusion that said, this is the best thing for the kids. So I think it's doing your due diligence, it's realizing that there's two different districts, and, and respecting that, but at the same time, driving to where we can have things unified as best as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Tseng.
Having, serving on the board for four years, and I see the differences and the similarity between the two community. You know, the same thing is we are very focused on the social, emotional well-being in addition to the academic excellence of this, for our students. And of course, there are some other differences about students in one school might have more focus on one area and the other school might have more in the other area. So I think, you know, keeping a two school, you know, actually, it's a good thing is because for our staff and for the student, we actually can collaborate, you know, and provide the best practices among those two schools. And I think each of the school, just like the last few weeks, we have the board, you know, approve, adopt a single improvement point for each of the school. So by looking at the goals and the action taken, you know, from each of the side, they have a different, they address differently for their school needs. So I think, you know, as long as we keep in mind, what is the best interest for each individual school? And we treat all this, the needs and the requirement from the school, you know, treated fairly and respectfully. I think it's okay to have two, you know, with the joint high school district on that. It'd take a lot of effort if we wanted to unify that. There was a lot of the legal, you know, issue and then the procedure we have to go through. Just put it out there.
Thank you. Ms. Rossi?
I agree with what everyone has said so far, and I think it's a, it's a benefit to our communities to have the two different schools because each school meets the needs of their specific community. And then we do try to have some things in common so that, you know, math, English, whatever. So addressing the needs of each of the communities, I think, is just vital, and I think it's a blessing for our, both of our communities because they are different. And for the last part of the question about family choice, we do provide as a district the opportunity for families to, it's inner school transfers. If a family from Los Gatos feels that Saratoga would better meet their students' needs, we have a process that those, that family, and vice versa, that that family can go through if they want their child to go to the other school. And I have to say that I think almost, I'm pretty sure it's 100% of the time, we have been able to meet the needs of those families. So we try to take everybody's interests to heart.
Thank you. The next question, and we'll do it, Ms. Tseng, Ms. Rossi, Mr. Park, and then Mr. Jones. The question is, how do you think we should face the challenge of the rapidly growing population of Los Gatos High School? Ms. Tseng?
I have, during this reelection campaign, I have met many of the Los Gatos residents talking about the town development, the new North Forty, new development on that one. And there is a lot of the concern about the high enrollment, increased enrollment for the school, you know, traffic, all those issues. So that's why the board has taken this into consideration greatly. We passed the parcel, we passed the facility bond two years ago, and we are now in the process of building the new classroom, you know, music building, and then student center, all the other things. And we also have been smart, tried to re, relook, examine the existing facility. For example, at Los Gatos High School, we changed one of the room, used to be the storage room, we refurnished that and become a classroom. So we tried to be smart about that and re-function of the existing facility.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi.
Yes, we have, we were fortunate enough that the community supported our measure. Yes, we have, we were fortunate enough that the community supported our measure E, which in large part was to increase the capacity of Los Gatos High School. So we are ahead of the increased enrollment. And as Catherine said, not only are we building new buildings, but we have reevaluated many of our spaces at both schools to better use the space now than, you know, for, however it was used 10 years ago. But it is a challenge. And also, as far as the North Forty, our superintendent goes to those meetings and tell, you know, shares the concern that we, as a district, have for the increased population that could possibly impact us. So we are working diligently on that.
Mr. Park?
Sure. I actually served on the committee, actually, from this board, which was called the Surplus Land Committee. And actually, there was a study that went out, and I'm surprised that the other board members haven't seen it, that actually talked about the students. And the number of students actually in Saratoga over the next seven years is declining. The number of students at Los Gatos is increasing, but it's not decreasing at an alarming rate. And in fact, in seven years, they still, there still should be plenty of room. And obviously, I think that they're doing a good job in preparing for that. So I think that we're in pretty good shape when it comes to that.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I won't repeat what Mr. Park said, but basically, I think we're in not that bad a shape. And I think a lot of work has been done to re-task facilities, which is the first thing as a business person, when you run out of room, you say, okay, what can we change around? So I think the right kinds of things have been done, but I think we're really in pretty good shape.
Thank you. We'll start, well, the next question is sort of a broader question about, in your perspective, what are the two biggest challenges facing the district over the next four years? What are the two biggest challenges facing the district over the next four years? We'll start with Mr. Jones, then Ms. Seng, then Mr. Park, and then Ms. Rossi.
Okay. I tend to view things maybe in a little bit different light. There's millions of challenges. And I'm a very much of a tops-down type of a person. So the, in business, you get the best people, you don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, you don't know what's going to happen the next day. So you do contingency planning, et cetera, but you realize that whatever you plan for is going to change. So my approach is to keep an open mind, keep your finger on the pulse, figure out what's going on, what changes are afoot, and then deal with them at the time. So I'm not coming in with a big agenda to say, we're going to fix this problem and this problem. I don't think we're broke. By broke, I mean non-functional. I think we've got schools that are functioning pretty well. But that means that you, to keep it that way, you have to continue watching it and making decisions along the way.
Sorry, that threw me off, Ms. Seng.
I think one of the challenges we have is the professional development. There are a lot of tasks, you know, facing this, our new, our school system these days. You know, we have to, we need to implement the Common Core standard, and we need to implement a new generation of the science curriculum. And our teacher really have done a fantastic job to help our student. But I think they, we will need a strong, we, I'm a strong supporter of spending on professional development to enable our staff to continue to grow. So that's one challenging that I see. The second one, I think, we could always do better, is communication. Communication is the key for the success of the organization or the district. A lot of the good thing has happening in this district, but yet the community may not know. So we are working, our district has taken the active role in using many different kinds of media and ways to reach out to our community, to seeking their input, because community engagement is very important in our decision-making process.
Thank you. Mr. Park?
Sure. For me, I think the two most important things are teachers and technology. On the teachers, I mean, just like any Silicon Valley's software company, you need to hire, you need to recruit, you need to retain, and you need to motivate your best people. And I know we have great teachers here in Los Gatos and Saratoga, but we need to continue to make them better. Because, I don't know if any of you remember your college teachers, but I remember my high school teacher, Mr. Lopez. That guy, science teacher, killed me. And in fact, he was the hardest teacher I ever had, but he was the best one, too. You had to actually, there was no multiple-choice questions, and it was, you had to actually spell it right, and it was, you had to write it down. On the technology side, we're in the middle of Silicon Valley here, and we should be at the forefront of the curve on this. We have money to spend because of the bond on this, and we need to make sure that we spend it wisely, and we help our students for the future. If they want to stay here and live and work here, we need to make sure that the technology is taken care of. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi.
Yes, I agree that staff development is one, and it's a challenge. Sorry. Staff development is certainly important, and I certainly don't look at it as a challenge because I think our staff is ready, willing, and able to take on any task that is presented to them. But we need to support, support them in the, in the new Common Core standards and in implementing these technological skills that we are demanding of them to present in the classroom to help the students. So I would say that staff and technology together are two important things for the next four years.
Thank you. We turn now to another question, and this has a question about vocational electives. How do you envision a diverse offering of vocational electives at both schools? And we'll start with Mr. Park, Ms. Rossi, Mr. Jones, and Ms. Seng. How do you envision a diverse offering of vocational electives being available or offered at both schools?
Well, I think the role of the board is to, is to work with the superintendent to make sure that, to continue to push for that. It's not the board's job to come up with what these should be. But they definitely should be pushing the superintendent to make sure that the appropriate classes are offered and the roles are offered. I think, again, it's staying at the highest level is, is not coming up with this, but actually working with the teachers, working with the students, working with the parents, and making sure that the superintendent and his staff bring that together.
Thank you. Ms. Rossi? Oh, your mic, please.
Yes, forget. Vocational electives are certainly a very necessary part of the curriculum to meet the needs of all of our students. And we actually have a joint partnership with, I always forget the name because they keep changing it, the CCOC.
CCOC.
CCOC, Metro Ed, yeah. And that's the Technical School, the Vocational Technical School in San Jose, which offers an array of courses. So if there's any vocational course that any of our students want to take, that is available to them at this Metro Ed, which, if you have not been to this facility, it is just unbelievable. You can get dental, veterinarian, almost any course. So I do feel that we already try to provide the vocational electives that our students may desire.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I don't have much to add, other than vocational is one special need. You know, not every one of our kids are going to go to Harvard. This may be a disappointing piece of news to some people, but there are different student needs. Some people will go directly to college, some will go to local colleges, some will go into the military, some will go into the trades, some have special challenges that may require different things. So I think it's just that we make sure that we keep all these different contingency or constituencies in our minds and make sure that we serve them as best as possible. I have seen the program that they're talking about, the vocational program, and it's outstanding. And it's reasonably set up where the kids can get there and still keep their regular school loads. So again, it's just diligence.
Ms. Seng?
It is very important to serve the programs for all students. Not everyone wanted to go to college right away. So I think, I'm very happy to serve the Metro Ed School District, which is a joint power agency of six local high school, high school district to provide vocational education for our students if they are interested, as our board representative. Last night, we have, the district have this workability after high school event get-together, and then there is a highlight for the Metro Ed education. Metro Ed is for career and college readiness. They have wonderful 27 programs, including the veterinary assistant, animation, dental assistant, medical office assistant, pharmacy, sports medicine, culinary, to just name a few. And many of them are actually UC-qualify A through G, you know, courses. So be providing those for our student as a choice, and it's great, and it's very important.
Thank you. I think we should do a lightning rod question at this point in time. This is, you know, five seconds, a pretty quick question, 10 seconds. What subjects in school were your worst subjects? Subject, what was your worst subject in school? And what was your best? We'll start with Mr. Jones, and we'll just go down the row.
I can't think of worst. I had some favorite teachers, and the teachers tended to be the subjects that I liked best. So I don't know how to answer that. Someone stop that.
Mr. Park?
I was a science and math guy, I liked that. Not so good with art. But my girls are really good with art.
Ms. Rossi?
Also, science and math, and I guess language arts would not be my number-one pick.
Ms. Seng?
Okay. I am very good in math and numbers, but my favorite subject actually is history.
Very good. Okay, another good question, we'll just go down the line in the opposite direction. What is your favorite color?
Blue.
Pink.
Green, it goes with my eyes.
Green, it goes with his eyes.
All right, now back to the topic at hand, a little light moment, okay. Next question, and we will start with Ms. Seng, and then Mr. Park, Ms. Rossi, and then Mr. Jones. This has to do with sort of the, I think, the emotional state of our students, because, you know, at this age in high school, a lot of them are going through a lot of stress. And there's that academic stress. And, and a lot of pressure that they're feeling to perform academically very well. And we've talked about the emotional health of the students, and how can we help them? What programs would you suggest? What things are important, and what would you do, and how do you address the issues of these kinds of stresses that our young people go through? And I've forgotten what order I, do you all remember? My grid is, I think it was Ms. Seng, wasn't it? And then Mr. Park, and then Ms. Rossi, and then Mr. Jones. So the, the stress that our young people are going through at this age is hormonal changes, but it's also, you know, there's that academic pressure, especially in these high-achieving schools in this community.
Okay, all right. So students' social-emotional well-being is one of my top priorities as a board member. And in our school district, we have had excellent support, you know, to support our students' social-emotional well-being, like the CACI, to support the counseling, you know, and guidance for the students. And then we also have peer-to-peer club, you know, so the student itself, they can be self-support to themselves on that one. And we also have a lot of the professional training, and our teachers has been totally engaged in this passage work, which is really help the student to relieve the stress and have the inclusiveness with our community. And I think many things, you know, as things evolve, we really wanted to focus on the social-emotional well-being of our student. In this world, it's very competitive, and our student facing a lot of the challenges and pressure. And as an adult, as a board member, and as a parent, we need to work diligently to support them.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
Sure. Obviously, this is a very important issue, and I think each student obviously has their own different needs, both emotionally and with, with learning. I think one of the things that, that we can continue to do, and the importance of this is relieving stress, is sports programs. I think sports programs, especially team sports programs, are great. I'm very familiar with this myself. I also think music, any outlets, music, art, where you can get your confidence and you can feel good at something, is important. So I think that's what I'd say to that. One, it's very important, and two, that there are outlets, such as sports, music, art.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi.
I certainly agree with what both of my... Neighbors, right. Have said so far. But I wanted to add, what I'd like to add is that, as a district, we have now come to realize that stress is going to be a part of their student, our students' lives. I mean, stress is just part, I'm stressed right now, so what can I say? So I think what we are now also focusing on is managing stress. And that's becoming an integral part of our counseling services and with our teachers, is managing student stress. And to that effect, we have a new schedule, which has helped somewhat. I think teachers are limiting the amount of homework, they're trying to coordinate when they give tests so that you don't have all the same tests the same day. So we're working on managing stress as well.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, well, Catherine mentioned CACI and things like that. I mean, I was around when Audrey took her life, and it was amazing to me to see how quickly the school, the district, et cetera, responded. I was very encouraged, I was on school-side council, as kids came forward to do peer-group help with, with, with stress. So there's a lot of things going on at the district. I think the teachers are realizing it. The new Bell Schedule does help. But at the end of the day, I think we have to realize that as parents, we have a significant part of the equation that is us, what we put on our kids. I try to tell my kids, it's going to be okay. You know, you're going to survive this, you're going to thrive. But that's a reinforcement that has to take place regardless of what happens at school.
Thank you. I think you might have alluded to this, I'm not sure, but I'd like to pursue this more because it's more specific. It's along the same lines, and this has to do with dealing with specifically internet bullying. Are there some specific tactics you have, and what would you advocate to minimize and to deal with internet bullying? And we'll start with Ms. Rossi, Ms. Seng, Mr. Jones, and then Mr. Park. What do you advocate, or how do you think the high schools should deal with internet bullying, which has become so pervasive?
Well, I'm aware that we do have a policy at both schools, which is to deal with internet bullying. I know that there is continual meetings with, we have resource officers at both high schools, and they meet with the students in a group and explain to them the repercussions of internet bullying. The counselors touch on this when they have their group meetings. So this is a... their group meetings. So, this is a topic that is of utmost importance at all of our, all three of our schools, and it's something that is dealt with and worked on, on a continual basis. The students are always, are continually reminded of internet bullying and, you know, how to deal with it, and how to report it, and all the other things that go along with it.
Ms. Singh?
Thank you. Internet bullying has been an issue for our, for not only our district, but in the nation. And then I agree with Ms. Rossi just mentioned, you know, there are few things, you know, our school district has put in place. But there also, in addition, we also have, each of the school side, they have their own way. For example, some of those program, like a freshman focus. So, when the freshman coming into, from the middle school coming to the high school, we wanted to set it right for them. So, there is a, both schools have the school resources officer will, you know, demonstrate, and then we'll talk to them about internet bullying, and then what's the extension of that, what's the legal consequences of that, what's the unintended consequences on that. So, we wanted to give the student a clear understanding, you know, what, what's the boundary, and what you should do about that. So, I think there are always the way we can improve and to do a better job on that one, and I think we just need to continue work as a group, you know, with our teacher, with our counselor, with our parents. We work together.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, some of you in the audience are old enough to remember Mad Magazine and Spy versus Spy. And that's the situation we're in. Whether it's cyberbullying, or whether it's cyber warfare, each side is trying to outdo the other. And you think you get your finger over the hole in the dike, and all of a sudden, a new app pops up, and people jump on it. And kids don't always think the implications of what's going on. So, we, we can't chase it, we, from application to application. We do have to step back and say, how do we train our kids? How do we instill this in our kids that you don't bully? And it's a never-ending job. I mean, there will always be temptations, and so it's something that you have to watch day in and day out. So, we're in for the long haul, I think.
Mr. Park?
I mean, I think bullying in any way, whether it be cyberbullying, or bullying on the playground, or anywhere else is wrong. So, I don't really have a lot more to say, except that the, I think, but the counselors, the teachers, parents, all need to be responsible, and communicate, and work together on it. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. This one has to do with experience in construction, and I'll start with Mr. Jones, and then Mr. Park, Ms. Rossi, and Ms. Singh. There's been a great deal of new construction at both high schools. Tell us about your experience in managing major high school construction projects. Mr. Jones?
Okay, I don't have any experience in managing high school. I have been an electronics executive for 50 years. I've run companies from 10 employees to 10,000 employees. I've built facilities that cost tens and hundreds of millions of dollars, and so I have a strong background in building factories, office buildings, et cetera. One construction is a bit like another. I mean, the basics are that you have to watch the details, you have to watch the timelines, the Gantt charts, all of those things. So, whereas I have a blind spot for high school buildings, I have a very broad and strong background in managing building projects for companies that I've run.
Thank you. Mr. Park?
Who asked this question? Well, I sure hope we have some, some good project managers, because I, I hope the board isn't spending their time micromanaging building projects. If they do, then we got something else going wrong. But I think, like, like my neighbor, Mr. Jones here, I've managed, and been executive of both public and private companies in the Silicon Valley here, you know, managed a lot of people, a lot of projects, including locations everywhere, including doing remodels on my own house. So, in terms of understanding in detail a high school construction project, I'm going to leave it to the experts, but I think I can, I can manage them.
Ms. Rossi?
Yes, I think that the construction projects at our schools are best left to the experts. Now, to that end, before we hired our construction manager, we got a thorough education in the way building projects can be delivered to a nonprofit system. And we, you know, interviewed different construction project leaders. And we feel that through our vetting, we hired the best construction manager there is, and we rely on him in working together with our chief budget officer, who has experience with construction. So, together, the two of them have run the, run the projects. But also, and Catherine and I are on the Measuring Committee, we are constantly reviewing the change orders and the, the costs of each of these projects. So, I feel in that respect with the financial part of it. I certainly am well up on that one, but as to the actual physical building, I'm not. And I, I was over there at Saratoga, saw the...
Thank you.
That's okay.
Okay. As a board, I'm not expert in the construction, but as a board, we do our due diligence to examine, you know, all kind of like a construction delivery method. So, we do have, you know, the special, specialist, you know, help us to understand. So, to, before we make the decision to choose which construction manager, or choose what kind of deliver method, we do go to the due process. So, we, so it help us to make the informed decision on that. Other than, you know, our CBO, our site administration teams, you know, working with the construction company. So, as a board, we oversee the, the whole process. But I think I'm more concerned about managing the budget of this whole construction, because we all know the construction budget always run like a runaway train. And it's very, very important to make sure, you know, all those needed facility, either renovation or addition, you know, will be done through this major, major project. So, that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Time is running short, and unfortunately, I have three questions we're not going to be able to get to. And I, for those whose questions were not answered, I will encourage you maybe to speak to the candidates afterwards. It's now time for us to begin our closing comments, and it is a two-minute time limit. And we will start in the opposite order in which we began. So, it'll be Ms. Singh, Ms. Rossi, Mr. Park, and Mr. Jones.
Thank you again, legal of women voters for hosting this at Candidate Foreign, and thank you for your time to be here. I would like to emphasize my involvement with a variety of school and community organizations, clearly demonstrate my belief in the whole child education. It's not only the academic, but also the social-emotional well-being piece for our students. Through my reelection campaign, I have had the opportunity to talk with many parents, students, community leaders, staff, and teachers, and have gained an even better understanding of the values and priority of our school district. With my passion, commitment, experience, vast knowledge of schools, and community involvement, I will collaborate with all the stakeholder, so together, we can make the best education to prepare our students for their college, for careers, and fulfilling lives. Thank you for your time again, and I respectfully asking for your vote for me in November 8 election. Thank you.
Ms. Rossi?
Our community is fortunate to have and realizes much benefit from the strong working relationship among the school administration, the teachers, the students, the parents, and the community, and in no small measure to the stewardship of an experienced, competent, and stable Board of Trustees. We have a highly successful board model. I've had leadership roles in that success for the past 12 years as a trustee, serving as president twice, as well as vice president twice, and on many of the board committees. I'm an experienced educator in addition to my extensive board management. Experience does count. A track record of success matters. I'm passionate about the continued success of our schools in meeting the needs of all of our students in this diverse society, and I'm passionate about students, and I am wanting the best for our schools down the road as far as you can see. I seek your support to, to serve another term as trustee. So, November 8, I hope you consider voting for Rosemary Rossi. Thank you. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for the League.
Mr. Park?
Didn't ask me about my favorite food. It's steak, by the way. I truly believe we need a fresh perspective on this board, and that's why I'm running. I'm a completely different type of candidate, and I think you've seen that tonight. I possess a different motivation. My kids are going into this district, and I have skin in the game. I have the experience. I'm a seasoned finance executive, a business professional, and I have real-world budgeting experience. I also have the leadership qualities and volunteer qualities that I think that you've seen. I've spent 20 years on the La Scata-Saratoga Rec Board. I've been a coach, and I've been a volunteer in many areas. I've also been endorsed by the District Teachers Association, current and prior board members, members of this board, and many local officials. Thank you, and I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I second to some degree what Kyle said. I, I guess I consider myself to be a different kind of candidate. I am a businessman, but I also have real empathy for our kids, and I really want the best of, for all of our kids. I think the perspective of having a kid in high school for the four years that I'll be on the, on the board provides a unique insight for the board into what's going on day-to-day. It's one thing to go to a PTO meeting or a football game, but it's something else to have a discussion with your daughter every day about what went on at school and what's happening. So, I, I bring what I believe is good listening skills, delayed decision-making to where I hear all the points, but at some point, it's time to fisher-cut bait. And so, there's a balance that has to be struck between consensus and getting on with a timely decision. So, I believe that's what I bring. I would hope that on November 8, that you would join the, the, the folks at the DTA, at the La Scata-Saratoga District Teachers Association, and they've endorsed me, and I would like your vote, which is your form of endorsement for me as a board member. So, I would very much appreciate your vote, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being a great audience. I think this clearly gives you an insight into the four people who are running for the two seats on the La Scata-Saratoga Union High School District. It's an opportunity for them to share their vision and their thoughts. Thank you for responding. Let's give them now a big round of applause. We, we want to urge, from the League's point of view, there's more information on the website. If you didn't write down all of the qualifications, experience, education, I did check, there, I believe all four of them have their information on VotersEdge.org. It's a League-sponsored website, very unbiased, with a great deal of information, www.votersedge.org-California. You can pick up a bookmark, I believe some of them are outside with the website. But really, the other advantage of this is you can also, in addition to finding out the biographical information and the philosophy of our four candidates here, is find great information on the, all of the measures that are, you'll be voting on November 8. A lot of people are familiar with the top of the ticket. Whether or not you choose to vote on the top of the ticket, don't not vote. There's a lot of good stuff, much lower, and, and these are things that will affect our lives. I'm glad to see all the young people there, because you're going to live with it longer than the rest of us will. So, make sure your parents vote, or you're interested in it, and you'll get both pros and cons on it, as well as what the League feels is very, very important, understanding the money trail. So, there's good information. Thank you for your interest, and we'll all be voting November 8. Thank you.
Thank you.[1264.71]